Call the school board for St. Lucie County Special Work Session Meeting to order. Welcome to all of you. We have a full galley today. That's nice, which must mean you all expect questions from us, so I guess we'll be held to that. Before we begin, if we could stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and at this point, we will turn it right over to Superintendent Jen.
Good morning to everybody. It's an exciting day for us. I have my red, white, and blue on, and hopefully everybody out there has voted. And we'll know tonight, and we'll know this evening, hopefully right around 7:00, the results of this, but we'll talk more about that. But anyway, speaking of the election, going with a mail-in, all mail-in, as of this morning, we almost have 32% people vote, which is normally in a special election, you would anticipate in the last two, that's been around 8%, 9%, 10%. So this is really a good turnout, and it's been pretty much even with Democrats, Republicans, and no party affiliations in the bottom third. And so I think that it'll be interesting for other places to follow that, because you're allowed to do mail-in ballots when you don't have a name on there, and to increase that participation, because we wanted to get as many votes out as we could, or as many voters to have a say in the future. So it looks like that's exceeded some of the expectations that a lot of folks had there. So we'll, I'm sure that number will grow a little bit today before 7:00 tonight, and then we'll find out what happens. And next, and I think this, maybe Chris sent it out yesterday, next Tuesday morning at 8:30, we're going to meet here for a public hearing. I'm going to make a recommendation to the board regarding the Somerset Charter. We had asked if they would, it was due May 2nd, I think it was the deadline for both sides to come together and hash everything out. We met yesterday with their team and their Board of Directors and our team, so our group is formulating a draft right now and getting together, and then I'll have a recommendation later this week for the board members. I'll call each one of you as well. And then regarding that, we did ask for an extension to go for the May 14th board meeting so we could do it normally in the evening, so folks could come out and, you know, like you'd have a public and like the normal, do our regularly scheduled meetings. The second Tuesday, they were not, it has, both sides have to mutually agree to do that. They didn't want to do that. They didn't want to postpone for two weeks. So we were forced to get everybody's schedules together and do this next week. Not forced, but that was really the only other option to do that.
Do they have a local representative on your board?
The local representation, I don't, Jonathan?
No, they do not.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll get a recommendation together, get stuff together. We'll have the public hearing. We're going to do it in the cafeteria downstairs, so we'll be on a time certain, and we can work that out with the chair and make sure that the board is heard and any members of the community that want to come out with that. And then, this is a busy, busy time, and in May, May 14th, we're going to request the board workshop before the board, a board work session before the board, the regularly scheduled board meeting. Today, we're going to talk about security. We're going to talk about capital improvements to the school centers, but I want the board at that meeting to really talk about, for us to make a presentation due regarding the latest state legislation, but more importantly than that would be, you've heard of the comments, and you've seen the things in the paper regarding a grand jury and looking at certain districts and to see if the districts are doing what they say they're doing. So we want to make a presentation to the board, to show the board and bring comfort to the board that we're doing exactly what we say we're doing. We think we're following all the state statutes to the T, but we want to make that presentation to you. I'd rather do that before the board meeting in early May as opposed to the end of May, so that, because we're going to get into graduations, we're going to get into a very, very busy, busy time. And I know that several, many of you have talked to me about that, so I thought that that would be appropriate to make that presentation. We're also going to bring forward some, looking at our Level 4s offenses, particularly in the area of drugs and marijuana itself, and we want to talk a little bit about a possible policy change with that and have a discussion with the board. So, and that's time certain, because if we, we have, if we get the thumbs up, we would have to have done it in the June, the June, the June meeting, the regular meeting in June, so that schools could put it in their handbooks and we could be out in front of this. And so I'll talk more to you all about that as well, and have staff members talk to you. So today, Terrence, come on up, Terrence, he's got, if anybody's computer breaks down, we got the people right here to fix it today. And our facilities maintenance, IT department, and security department, and others have been working very hard to work on our school centers and capital improvements on our school centers. And so what I wanted to do is give you all kind of a brief overview of that, and then we'll go on a field trip, okay? I hope you packed your lunches, and we'll run over to the site real quick this morning and give you a very brief tour of the building where it stands. Mr. O'Leary.
Good morning. Good morning, Board.
His birthday was yesterday, by the way, so.
Mr. Jen's was Sunday.
Thanks, Terrence.
You're welcome. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Chairman, Superintendent Jen. Today, we're going to talk about all of our capital work we've done around hardening our schools, but I would be remiss if I didn't start with my teammates, and as they are the ones that are out doing the daily work from that perspective. So I'm just going to introduce them real quick, and if I'm, because it's some of them, it's the first time I've seen them in a tie, so we're going to make sure that we get a picture from that. But just starting with me, if you could just, Ron John Delet, who is our Director of Effects Director of Facilities, Ron Kramer, who works on the security camera project and cabling, Keith Heisey, who works on our security, and I put them together, the three amigos, Julie, Niall, and Von, who are on security, they have drones, all the different things you see from that perspective. Rob, there's the tie, Diamavo, who works with a lot of our trades, has been doing a normal job with me, Matt Wether, who's our Senior Project Manager, and you'll see on building numbering in our capital facilities, Jeff Deependor, another Senior Project Manager, and you'll see his work on fencing and Knox boxes, which are key boxes from that. Don Carter, also from a transportation lens, because what we're going to talk about today is about interoperability, making sure all the systems work together so that we have a single pane of glass, so that we're not looking amongst all these different systems. As you remember, during the Commission Report about Marjory Stoneman Douglas, people were running about the cameras. They were running over here. Really, what we're trying to do is simplify that for our customers from that perspective. So truly, we are one team. We look at solutions, capacity, skill sets amongst all of our departments, bringing them together so we can provide a unified solution that our end-users are able to access, get the information, our first responders, access, get the information, so that we can mitigate any of those projects. Really, our core values as we work together as a team is our commitment to excellence, our customer focus. If our customers aren't involved in the process, they won't understand the solutions that we're providing. So everything you see before, that are coming before, have principal input, have all the different lenses, teacher input, as we go through and work on that. Communication, trust, teamwork, integrity, and ethics, that is our core value as an organization, as we provide that forth, so that the trust that our customers have in the work that we're providing them and the solutions that we're providing them meet the customers' needs from that perspective. And always benchmark is being the best in any solution that we're providing out there and the work and quality of work we bring out. So when I talk about safe learning environments, it's really important, because it is in our mission. Safe and caring schools is one part of our mission, and St. Lucie Public Schools World Stairs is a safe and supportive learning environment for our students, staff, and visitors. And then when we looked at these solutions, we kept them in mind. While we have to make sure we're hardening our schools, we still want them available to our parents, our community members, and in our designs, you'll see that. For instance, as we increase our fences from four to six feet, we're making sure that there's gates properly placed so that our community members can leverage those facilities, yet separating our school facilities from that environment. So we're still making them accessible. We want them to be accessible. We want our parents to make sure that they're coming to it. It's about the design and how we're leveraging our technologies that will allow us to do those types of things. Here's some of our current work that we're seeing. Some of it, we've already done with your help in the summer of 2018, directed by our superintendent. We had already had a single-point entry at all of our facilities checked, provided that, that was 12 schools that we worked during the summer to make sure they had this single point of entry. The Raptor Upgrade, which is our visitor management system that when students, parents come in or guests come in, they run their license through that. We're working currently on our camera upgrades and enhancement of video surveillance and information sharing. We're bringing in our BOLO app, which we approved. We did our kickoff meeting yesterday with them so that we can begin our pilots and deployments. Fortify app has been in place, and we received well over 70 triggers from that app that Brian's been very specific with. We're currently working on our fencing update at all school sites, our Knox boxes, or what we call key boxes, and I'll expand upon each of them as we go further, numbering all of our buildings, and then making sure that our partnership and our business relation management is strong amongst all of our departments, but also all of our teammates out in the community. Our local law enforcement have been very involved in all of these works, and we continue to have a strong partnership with them. Our focus areas for this are the security cameras, fencing, Knox box, securing school entryways. We've already done a single ingress. There's some schools, as you see listed there, White City, Southern Oaks, where you have a buzz-in that we need to do some additional work. That will be completed by the end of the summer as we move out, those sites there, the BOLO app from that perspective. So in the summer, as you talked about the single ingresses as you walked in, one point of entry, we did a lot of modifications, and most of those modifications, as you can see morningside here, when you walk in, we have closed it off, so you're forced to go into the front office. And if you look at all of our schools, that single ingress moves everybody to the front office, with the exceptions of what I just showed you on those schools where we have to make some modifications, like White City, we have the buzz-in, but we need some other work to really move you towards the front office. The signage is there. We did all that work based upon your support and the superintendent's recommendation. In the bottom, to orient you to the slides, these are levels. There are four level, three levels within the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Commission Report. Here are the recommendations from that report. As the Commission goes through, they continue to do their work each year. They just met their first time for this year as they're continuing to enhance school safety. So when you look at it, these are requirements that you'll also see from, coming from the DOE, those types of things. All of the funding here that we're talking about is coming from a safety and security grant we applied for, in that we also were required in that grant to give some to our charter schools, so they receive some of that safety money out of our grant. So these are all grant-funded types of projects that we're moving forward. So as I talked about, why we have a single ingress into all the schools and they direct to.
Do you want questions now or later?
If, I'll take them now.
Who's following up to make sure that, like, the state is monitoring us to make sure we're doing the work? Who's following them? Does the state do it, or is it us, once they get the money for the grant?
Well, there is a quarterly review that we have to send, submit, and we're working alongside our finance department, that we have to send quarterly updates to all of the financial monies that we're leveraging.
From the charter schools?
From the charters as well. There's a quarterly report that we just submitted April 12 to the state. It's a requirement of the funding.
But does anyone drive by and check to make sure the work's actually getting done?
Yes, we're going through and monitoring. Now, all of these projects.
Not to say that I don't trust them, but.
Exactly, and all of these projects have timelines within the grant. So for instance, some of the fencing projects have to be completed by 7:31, some other projects by 8:22, so we have all of those compliances by time and date that they must be done, and then we give quarterly updates to the state.
Okay.
So if you look at these, for instance, just an example here, here's White City Elementary. You have a single buzz-in, but when you came in, you had the ability, we're going to put in doors that lead you right to the front office. So that's what I mean secondary level of entries. These are the only schools, White City, Lincoln Park, Southern Oaks, St. Lucie, West Medland, Dale Castons, that were left to complete. Everybody else, we've already completed that work from that. Fencing, upgrading all of our sites, extending that fencing from four to six feet. If you look real closely, this here is FK Suite, or I'm sorry.
Looks like Fairlon.
Fairlon, sorry, coming into it, but you can see that it's already working here as individuals are already looking at the work that we're doing coming from it. It is a level one recommendation, but what I'm going to show you here is a drone shot going forth here. I want you to notice how vast, this is going to be about 13,000, over 13,000 square feet of fencing that we're putting in. This is just our first level of security. As you see here, we have further gates that are in for second level as we go through on proxies and those types of things. So you can see the outline of the gates. We've already completed those projects, and I have a list of several sites, morningside, Mariposa, we have several that are already completed. We have three vendors that are going in to expedite this project. See more, I can list them all. The next thing that we have going in place, so you can have a visual of it, this is Treasure Coast High School. We're putting in what we call key boxes or Knox boxes from that. We have it secured from the weather as you go into it and open up. These are key codes that you will put in. It's a digital display. Each one of our law enforcement department plus our own school security will have their own code. We have five sets of keys, master keys, that allow them to get into it, put in their numbers. We know what department took those keys. If they're in case of an emergency, they would have the master key for the schools as they go through from that perspective. So that is also a level one recommendation from the Commission's report. We are already out getting that done at all of our facilities, so you have a good example of what that looks like. Another recommendation is uniform, uniform building numbering. This is an example of what it will look like at Treasure Coast. You can see we're using the fish reports from the state, because there is confusion, and there was confusion when, you know, we all know Cobra Cafe, but if road patrol comes and they're not sure, we can have clear definition of where the buildings are. You can see in phase one, grant-funded, the signage on the wall, we'll do over 600 signs to label all the buildings from different angles, so depending upon where the emergency may come, our road patrol or individuals will have a good understanding. We're also walking them through and familiarizing. That has already took place, Brian's work with our local law enforcement to take tours of all of our schools, including fire as well, to make sure they have a good understanding of it. The second portion of that phase is labeling our roofs, so if we have drone activity, helicopter activity from that need, they will have a good understanding of that signage of each one of them. And that actually came from a recommendation Mr. Jen and I met with our Fort Pierce Central students, who were using the drone, as you recall, it was on the news, how they were using the drone to look at all the gates and opening of the gates. They had a recommendation, and it was a student solution, and then you'll see it later, it came out in the report labeling the roof, so they were headed that as well. Third would be numbering all the classroom windows from the outside as well, so you have, very simple, we're looking at very simple solutions. Again, if you read the report, there was confusion where, where in the building that they were going from that perspective. So those will be very small off to the side that will be visible to responders or those types of things from it. The other thing that we've upgraded, and that's the work of our NIO team, is our security camera infrastructure upgrade and interoperability. And really what we're doing here, as you look to the left, we're giving visual representation, the maps of every school that we're upgrading the cameras at. It's extremely important that we have that ability to look at a map from that perspective. We're also using the latest technology as we start rolling it out through our camera upgrades, is limiting the number of cameras that we need. So if you go out currently, and some of them, you'll see these clusters of cameras. There are new solutions in place that are IP-based that will allow us to look at other areas. So if you look in here, these are covering 180 degrees, and if you come back the other way, another 100. So we're, instead of having multiple cameras, we're limiting the number of cameras so that the, we get more view of it, but it limits our digital footprint within the building. Instead of it looking so secure and those types of things, these cameras are very limiting from that, but they're, allow us to work within other applications to really get a comprehensive view. They're also IP-based, so we're allowed now, as we're driving around, wherever, if we're sitting here, we're going to go live demo real quick, you can get it on your cell phone, you can get it on your camera. So this gives Brian's teams opportunities to take a view of it, and if our first responders had to come in through our BOLO app, they'll be able to go ahead right into the camera systems. That's a little bit different than any of the other solutions that are out there, but when we are together as teams, we're leveraging infrastructures and things that allow us to provide innovative solutions, but limiting expense management and getting better results within the newer technology. So you can see that we are able to see the actual cameras right from our map, so we know exactly where they are. When we click on those, it actually brings up the different cameras within it. This is called a fisheye, and in doing in the fisheye, I'm able to control these 3D cameras and expand on where the situation is, those types of things, real quick. So if you look at it, I can control that, move it down. I can look at the stairwell from that, and that's called the fisheye. If I look at it from here, YouTube, I can just grab all the cameras and look throughout the hallway, different views from that perspective. So I just wanted to show you real brief, this is not vaporware. This is work that we've actually moved in place and can be monitored. It's, it's tracking and recording any motion that where it's going on. It can do notifications through the app, those types of things, if there is an incident for that. So just wanted to give you how the cameras are much different than we were when we just had some analog cameras. Now, we'll have analog cameras, but we'll continue to upgrade them as we move out, but the infrastructure, the servers, backend work that we're doing really is leveraging all of our infrastructure so that we can get it anytime, anywhere.
So Terrence.
Yes.
If that camera's facing that way, and something, let's say there's a couple of kids doing something in the stairwell, how does the principal go and check that?
So.
Will it be able to record it?
Yes, it records it on motion, slow motion.
Even if it's facing that way?
Correct, but then I have other cameras to run. That's a fisheye. That's just a different lens. As you can see, we're coming in, we can look at all those types of things as well. If I was just to do.
Kids are having a sit-in.
Here's a different view of a regular camera, not a fisheye view that is on there connecting it, and it will record right back to our server, okay, by full motion video. So if something comes into that area, anybody walks through, we can definitely copy that.
Yeah, but going back to the one in the stairwell, though, if you move the direction of the camera, it's only going to record that direction, though.
Right, so those cameras give us the ability to go in and move and get a good understanding. We have other cameras that have more of a placement like this, that are static and looking at.
But you have more of them in that hallway and stairway?
Exactly, so if you look all over here, you have static, different views that we can use to leverage from it, okay? So I just wanted to give you a quick demonstration of what it looks like from that perspective. We'll put it in. It's important, because all of this will now interface right into the BOLO app, which allows, as you recall, we did a quick BOLO demonstration for you, it's a panic button to every employee on their cellphone, so every employee can call a Code Red as part of what you're going to see again on March, May 14th, on our policies and procedures as we go through, but that panic button will be on their cellphone. They can go ahead and call a Code Red, employee check-in. Up here, you can see, if we use GeoFence, we know where our employees are in an emergency situation. If they're okay, safe, we're able to two-way live chat with them, communicate with them, stay, stay, hunker down, those types of things. The GeoFence, GeoFence are properties, so as soon as you came on, and there's different avenues that you can, if I go to another school, I have what they have on their custom optional menu path from those types of things. And also has mass notification, text, email. It also has an app that goes to every single computer notifying them that we're in a lockdown, Code Red type of situation. That was also a level two and a level three in the Commission Report from that. Wait, there's a lot more that we may not think about from the facilities. So lighting, safety is about lighting. We have gone through many of our school sites and upgraded all of the lighting to LED lighting for efficiency, but also bright. It looks like you're at Digital Domain Stadium at South County, at Treasure Coast, Fort Pierce Central, to make sure we have the brightness of that light. Our number one ticket that we're receiving from schools were keys, getting keys done, master keys, keys for their, we, Rob, Robert actually set up our own key cutting, so we're no longer going to, we're doing it in-house. We have cut all of those tickets down to maybe 30, if not less. I can check with him in a minute. And then the intercom systems, again, leveraging the IP solution with our technology group. All of these devices are on our network, so we know if they're up or down. Every morning, Niall, maybe at 5:00 in the morning, we send out to our whole teams now, not just IT, but to our facility teammates. All of them know air conditioning from any device. We can ping and make sure it's up on the network, so if there's an outage, we know it before our customers, and we can dispatch to make sure our service is onsite, getting the things ready before even the students show up on campus. So that really allows us to do those types, that type of work. In addition, Brian's been an extreme partner across all of our departments. He's involved in all of those projects. We run through where the Knox boxes are, how they're being set up, and his work on labeling the buildings, but he's also working on the bidirectional amplifier. That's a level three recommendation. It's making sure that when we have emergency management on our facilities, that they have communication, and we make sure that's there. We've done 10 schools. We continue to move forward to make sure that availability is there, so that we have great communication during crisis. But there's more in transportation, so what is transportation doing to make sure that they're secure, because 77 students on a bus, we need to make sure that they have the same types of safety within them. Every one of our buses is GPSed. We know exactly where that bus is. For the parents, they have, here comes the bus app. Over 8,000 parents have downloaded that app and are using that to see where their child is, meaning their bus. Now, all of our schools have what we call the Senovio app, and that can tell you exactly where any bus is at any time on all of our streets via GPS. We know exactly if the arm is opening on the door. We know everything about that bus, and we can do that right from Don's office, Jimmy's office. Schools can have the app on their phone so that they know their bus might be five minutes late, those types of things as well. Something that you're going to see tomorrow, as we're being interviewed by a television station, so you, I wanted to make sure you knew it first, we have 10 buses that are in a pilot program that's doing an audible alert, and I have a quick demonstration of those audible alerts from that, so.
Stop. Do not cross.
So in there, we now have in the front fender speakers that allow them to do, and our cameras and everything else notify the users. I'll give you another view.
Stop. Do not cross.
Notice the arm coming out protecting the students, and one from the top. So looking at safety from all angles, and that is what our, our rolling responsibility. All our buses have 14, 12 cameras on those buses. We've instituted, again, working as a team, the ability to download those videos when we need them. So as buses are going through bus loading area, they hit our wireless infrastructure, we're able to download the videos right from there, so if we had an incident, we can get access to those videos on the fly. Wherever they are hitting, we're able to download as those buses roll up. We download the video. We download the video for Jimmy and Don, for their viewer, for our law enforcement, so that we have access. Again, to tie that back, that's a level three recommendation to our Stoneman Douglas report. These are things that we've already have completed. So we are being proactive in our approach, looking at safety from multiple lenses from that perspective. All of our buses, we have really instituted the three-point belt system as we move through. It's recommended by Florida that you still have a lap belt, but we've moved to that three-point system, and we continue to be a leader in the nation in promoting that from that perspective. I can't go beyond, after just introducing our team, but we also have shots there of our drivers, because safety to them is of extreme importance on a daily basis that they go. So we want to make sure that they too, as our employees, feel safe in everything that they're doing on our roads as we go from there. So that concludes a real quick presentation, high-level presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Terrence, are the cameras covering the entire school or just in designated areas?
So we are mitigating any areas that we have what we call blind spots, but they, right now, I would say 90%, if not more, are covering all portions of our schools inside and inside. So we're working on the ones, we're working with our local SROs, where they, when they do find a blind spot, we get out there, we take a look at it. Keith and Von Peter lead that project, so they are in constant communication with our principals. And if they have an area where they feel that, they feel like they have a blind spot, we go ahead and we mitigate that for that. And the importance of the 180, we get more coverage, so that's why we're moving towards those types of newer technologies, but lessening the management of it. Currently, we have 2,783 cameras out on all of our campuses. So, management of those can be a challenge, and we want to make sure they're up and working at all times.
Currently, can you answer the question, are they working?
They are working.
All of them working?
Of them, right now, I have less than 100 that we're replacing and going through and fixing as we do the projects for replacing those, finding blind spots and doing them. So it's less than 1% of that that are, that we're mitigating. And they're up or down for different reasons. When we say they're not working, when we set the high expectation, it might be that they need to be cleaned because the weather has really modified, so that, it doesn't mean that they're not functioning, just means we need to clean the lens and those types of things. So our work is, it must be perfect, and so we've got to get out and clean those lenses.
And so you said 90% of the schools are covered?
Coverage, yeah. And when they're there, you know, we're out fixing them, and as we're assessing all the schools with the upgrades, we're mitigating all of those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm sure. Terrence, a lot of the shootings have been kids that attend the school, they know the way around the school, they had familiarity. So, on that end, we are doing see something, say something.
Doing the Fortified app, we have our own app, so there's several apps out there for the students to see something, say something.
And the staff goes through a particular training to watch for some of the psychological-
Correct. And you're going to hear a lot more about that on the 14th, but our staffs have been really trained on what to be looking for and those types of things. We have other solutions we're working for in a more proactive, looking at indicators and assessments that we're working through on some database things that we'll bring forward as we start.
And the current apps that we have now, that students or people can call in, they see something, say something, see something. Those current apps, how many people, do you have a number of how many people have called in since we've started those apps?
Sure. So I can get, I think it's, last week it was around like 75, it might be around 78. Brian, Brian Ruther really works on, I know that. Brian, you got the number?
And the apps came out when?
Uh, to be honest-
The Fortify app came out the end of October. Since October through, last time I checked, a couple days ago, we've received 60 Fortify tips, and they go to the principal, but normally they also go to myself and Deputy Chief Woods. And what I do is I make sure, I actually take a screenshot of the tip, and I send an email to the principal, or we've had a couple at night where I've called the principal, make sure they got it. We're working on it. We also have, as Terrence said, St. Lucie Public School app. I want to say we've gotten about four or five on theirs, and we've gotten nine Crime Stoppers. Crime Stoppers ones, well, we have the posters as we started early, 18, we've got nine. Most of those are actually criminally, crime-related tips. So Fortify, of the 60, probably about 98% are just really kind of unruly behavior, but it still needs to be dealt with, so.
So the combination of the three apps, that's what it is?
Three apps, yeah.
Okay?
Yes, thank you. Well, you know what, I'm also thinking right now, with the situation with the buses being upgraded, we know that there are cases when students are waiting for the bus to come, and the fights break out at the bus stop, and I think that that's really helpful, that we have given the bus drivers that, maybe they could yell at them, "Stop fighting." But no, truly, I think that it does give them more authority and more communication if they do drive to pick up students and there's a fight going on, or as we've seen in the past with a student, somebody's trying to kidnap a student or anything of that nature. I really think that a bus is having more ability to communicate is really good.
Absolutely, and they have, they have tons of communication.
Yeah.
Okay?
Any other questions? Thank you.
I just want to, this is, Terrence did a very, it was an excellent complimentary review of where we are. There's much more. We want to share a lot more on that on the, on May 14th regarding some of the questions and the, how we're adhering to the Stoneman Douglas, as well as the latest legislation, whatever that would be. Hopefully that'll be, the session will have ended and we'll have a better feel for that. But the team has done just a remarkable job, because with as large as our district is and as many buildings as you have, and you talked about, you know, it's just like your house, it's just like your car, you know, something's going to bust or break down. And they've really, they're on it, and it's the whole customer service focus, keeping our students and our staffs and community safe, and they've just done a remarkable job. Very, very proud, very happy with, it's like you said, it's a, we have, there's no silos, it's a nice team effort here, a nice culture that we have in our district, and that's just a perfect example of it. And I hadn't seen that yet, so that was the first time I had seen that as well. And I used to tell them, you know, get rid of those four-foot fences, because I could still jump those with a running start, but the six-foot, the six-foot's a little more difficult, but, said no. But anyway, they've done a fantastic job, and it's nothing to be taken for granted that they have just, they're on it, and continually problem-solving, and they have problem-solving mechanisms in place when things break down, and it's going to be a fluid thing. You're never going to be there. You're always going to continue, continue to improve and to improve to keep everyone safe, but we're in good shape and very pleased with it. So I want to say thank you, Terrence and the team, for coming on out as well, whether you had a tie on or not had a tie on. Speaking of ties, come on up. John, where are we going?
Welcome all to the new site. I would ask you all to come drive over and park in two, Fresco's parking lot, on the east side, which is the beginning of our new road called Brandiwall. I'll have my school report score parked there, and I'll bring you a Kawasaki mule to take you all over. So I'm going to go right now, if I'm going to be dismissed there to compare. Make sure your shoes hopefully are covered, yes, that's good, and we have hard hats for you if necessary. We're going to go on the front entrance, so you know what your expectation is. We're going to front entrance, look inside the boardroom, which isn't complete, of course, and then go on the west wing, which is our furthest along wing. On the east wing, there's a lot of work still on. I don't even want to go in there. I'm afraid I'll get nailed up in a wall if I have to move past it. So, and by the way, I wanted to say that the community members that are over there working have got the best attitude you've ever seen on a job site, I've ever seen. They just feel like they're part of something larger than themselves. So we've been appraising them as much as we can, but they're going in holidays, weekends, wherever they can to make this happen for us. So I appreciate that. So I'll see you all over there soon, okay?
There you go. Any other ideas?
Nope. Your seven o'clock.
Yeah, really. I'll be at Gertrude's office at 4:07. And-
Before we adjourn, on behalf of the board, I would like to follow your comments, though, because the team effort that has gone into this, making us safe and secure and that feeling, really there aren't words to thank you all enough for the work that you do, and I hope you know how much we appreciate you and value your input, everything you do for us every single day. Thank you.
I think we should give it up. Yeah. Back to work.